All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item would be adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Thank you. An adoption was in favor. And happy birthday to one of our councillors, another pensioner.
What do you mean "another one"?
I think Huey is...
We're both... we're in the 60s from the 60s. Even at that.
I just gotta get Huey to say to you, but he's got a commitment at 5 o'clock.
No, I didn't win.
Oh, you didn't win a gold today.
Well, there you go.
Thank you.
Have a great birthday. Kay Buck is here from the Comox Archaisa Museum. Welcome, Kay, if you'd like to come to the podium. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Well, I think most of us are familiar with the museum and, of course, we thank the town for being a great part of making it the success that it is by the location and by the continual funding. Otherwise, we could not survive. And so, we work hard over there to produce a product that we hope everybody's proud to show to people coming into town and to present to the people who live here. So, that's kind of what we've been working on for a long time. And our theme at the museum is, of course, the evolution of Comox. And so, we spent a great deal of time working in sort of the timeline so people can come in, they can walk around the museum, and they can get a feel for how things developed over time. So, having said that, we're here today to dig down on what we need to do for a little bit more funding. The funding that we have now from the town has been $25,000 annually, and that started in January of 2006. And since that time, through the benevolence of the town, we are now in a great location. But now, we are open to the public twice as many hours as we were before. And we have a wonderful facility that requires more cash to make a presentation of the information that we are providing because we've been really trying to bring a product that is first class. And so, we're really hoping that that would be helpful for us. At the present time, in the last year, we spent $47,000. And the money that we got was from a combination of funds, $25,000 from the town, $15,000 from gaming, $2,500 from the municipal district. And this year, we spent a total on wages of $35,000. We now have one almost full-time person and one very part-time person. And so, we try to operate that way. And, of course, we have been very fortunate to have a number of volunteers who produce a value of about $24,000, $25,000 of wages to the organization every year. Without them and the other funding, you know, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in. Unfortunately, there's only a couple of areas where we can continue to adjust our budget. And, of course, that would be in wages and in the actual cost of producing our product. So, if we don't have enough funds and have a shortfall, then we have to reduce wages or we have to reduce the amount of money that we put into the program. And right now, we're working on a very massive mapping project so that we can provide a layered mapping system that people can actually go and physically look at and see how the whole area developed. And along with the mapping will be interpretive sheets so that there will be information about environment and economic situations so that, of course, we can go to one place and be able to find a full project that will show them pretty much anything and everything they want to know about the area. And so, this is where a lot of additional money that we are able to acquire is being channeled, is to improve this project and get the maps printed and get them hung and get the interpretive sheets done and be able to have this ready for presentation. I don't know, I think most people have, I think, been in the museum at some point in time, so I hope. And, of course, anybody who hasn't been there, we would very be very pleased for you to come and we'd be very happy to give you the tour. So, I don't know if you have questions?
Okay. See, any questions, councillor Kendra?
Do you know roughly how many visitors you're getting?
The last two years, the visitors to the facility have averaged 8,000 a year, which is a significant increase over what we had before we moved upstairs there.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pletcher?
Just to comment, your exhibit last year that projected the Centennial St. Joseph's was an amazing exhibit, and I know it was greatly appreciated by not only the bishop and St. Joseph's, but I've heard many people in the community comment on it. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Councillor Price?
Yes, I'd just like to say what a wonderful job and how the whole place has been transformed and how you're using other medias to put the message out and becoming quite a film star, I'm sure. And I just watched the YouTube reviews featuring you this morning on Matt Lang. And so, yeah, so it does give us more promotion too, for people to tune into Shaw and you're quite often in there.
Shaw has been very generous with us and has done a lot of campaigns, and they're going to be doing more, they're going to be doing one on Allen Brooks. So, we've been kind of got them sponsored into doing a lot more historical things and getting into the stuff that's going on in the valley in that direction. So, I'm kind of...
Okay, councillor Ken?
Yes, the location is wonderful, and 8,000 visitors is a lot. And I know we all like that, and it's a nice place to bring people from all over town. But that many visitors that come there, would the museum ever entertain the thought of giving tourist information all as well? I've seen that in other communities, and we're looking to try and boost our tourism there. And I think when visitors come to a small town, one of the first places they go to is a museum, and I think it would be a natural tie-in. And it certainly would help us and our corporations if there was another service, although it's not your mandate, that you might consider giving.
Well, we are kind of an information center. People come there looking for information, which we're quite willing to provide. It's definitely something we can look at, was something we talked about when we first moved upstairs. And we do have things like bus schedules and different things that we pick up so that we have that stuff available because we do get people coming in frequently asking, you know, where's this, where's that, how do I get to here, how do I get to there, do you have, you know? So, we are kind of information central there already. People have found that that's the place to go to ask questions, so that's all good. But, you know, we might be able to look at an expansion of some kind that would produce more. We always have the tourist information booklets that have the maps and all that stuff, we have those available there. And we do have some other literature that people can take away with them. So, we have, you know, kind of recognized that this is an area that we can fulfill some things with, and so, we have been doing that to the extent that we can with where we're at now.
Yeah, just on that visitor information stuff, it could be done informally, but it could not be done informally. It has to be done under the auspices of the one that's out at the visitor center. And there's no funding per se for satellite locations, and certainly the airport, museum, the harbor authority, those are all informals. Same with the... Courtney, there wouldn't be any funding there. Before this meeting, I asked you about the regional district. As you know, recently, they've rationalized, they're taking steps to rationalize their grants and aid program into an arts and culture function, which they're working through at the regional district, and that's from the rural areas A, B, and C. And I see that you got reduced from 4,000 to 2,500. I would hope that through that process that you may be able to get additional funding on a more predictable, sustainable basis. Certainly, this council has continued with the support over the last number of years. In fact, we did that for a number of organizations under the cultural budget, which we'll review as we go through our budget. And we've done it for three-year terms, essentially consistent with our term. The one question I do have is you referenced the mapping program, and it looks like it's a cost item of about $5,000.
Well, that's what we spent this last year, plus the cost of building the new display which we have that shows the labor cost. And so, we have a Matt Lang special for this year.
But you budgeted $5,000 for the year ahead for that, right?
We have budgeted it. Now, whether we get to spend it will depend on how much money we get coming in.
Right. And in terms of that, is that an ongoing thing or is it, like you say, you spent some last year, I think you spent...
It is an ongoing thing.
But is that something you're gonna do every year?
Well, until we have a finished product, we will have to put some money into it each year. And a lot of it will depend on how much labor we have to put towards it, as well as the cost of where we're at in the research.
I guess my question is, if it's a one-off or maybe a couple-year, three-year program, isn't that something that you could also ask service clubs such as the Lions and the Liberty for consideration?
We might be able to get something from them, but generally speaking, the funding isn't large enough for a project of that size. Because like right now, Watershed is producing some of our maps for us, and the bill is like $700. And sometimes you'll get a couple hundred dollars here and a couple hundred dollars there, and sometimes it doesn't work out well. This is a very large project. It will probably cost something significant, I can't really say, because we've completed kind of the pre-1900 mapping portion, but then we have interpretive sheets and things like that. So, I don't really know what the overall cost is going to be, and it's all relative to manpower that's able to do research too. So, it will be an ongoing thing. But we're getting to the point now where we're soon going to have a portion of it to display, and then we'll be able to move forward from that. And eventually, we're going to produce a digital format as well.
Okay, so it might be helpful for future reference and deliberations of this council on the budget for us to know what you're talking about, how many years you're talking about, because as we go forward here, we need to see whether we can sustain that. We committed, as I indicated, $25,000 for a three-year term concurrent with ours. To go beyond that, whether we do it for this year or subsequent years with another council, it would be something that if you're looking at for this mapping program in particular, if it seems like that's what you're looking for, you need to know more about that.
Well, that's part of it, and we also need to bolster up our salaries, we need to bolster up the number of hours of employed people.
But no, I just look at your budget, and it says there's a shortfall of $5,000, so if you didn't get it, you wouldn't do it.
That kind of jumps out, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else? See, none. We will be referring this through the budget process and letting you know about it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for attending this conference.
Nothing specific is required by way of referral motion there, it's just simply going to be a part of the discussion that we'll get into the cultural budget as we go forward, which will include, as I said, other organizations that we've looked at in the past. Probably in two weeks' time, we'll start again on that kind of stuff. Director Finance, now he has his head. So, speaking of Director Finance, we have his report, the fourth quarter financial statement for receipt.
For receipt.
On receipt, now, all's in favor. Elaborately straightforward reports, bringing us a summary, of course, subject to final reconciliations. But I think this was a big part of the work that the finance department was working on to get us to a point where we can get into the meat of the budget in two weeks' time. So, any questions or comments further than that? Yes, councillor Swift?
I just have a comment, I think, about water metering. I did watch the meeting last week that took place here, and I see the expenditure is the $73,000 rather than the $25,000. And I think when we allotted that money, that $25,000, we were expecting that it would go to residents who wanted to continue with water meters or have one installed. And as I understand it, the money's being used to upgrade roads and systems that are stolen use as roads are replaced. And I'm happy with that, but I think that maybe we're missing an opportunity with that $25,000 and that we can move it into something, because I understand this program is going to continue regardless. So, I'm just wondering if that $25,000 could be used for something else? And I don't know what these eligible sidewalks and things are going to be.
We'll be looking at the budget in forward DCL as we go through. This has been, I guess, discussed in the last two meetings, motions made, motions defeated. I guess if I, I did look at the video as well. If I can summarize the discussion and try to highlight where we're at with it, there's an allocation of funding out of the gas tax money towards water metering. It's an eligible expense under the current gas tax program, which contains for two more years. There will be a renewed gas tax and infrastructure program from the federal government. We're expecting details of that in the next few weeks. It'll be a process where UVCM will determine, is there the agency that will be, the money will be flowing to from the federal government? They'll be determining eligibility of gas tax money for whatever going forward. So, at this point, clean air, clean water, and sewer are eligible expenditures that we can use gas tax money for. So, that's one point. The other point about putting this money into something else really would depend on what it is and whether it's eligible. The budget item, or sorry, the reconciliation that's shown here shows that that was an amount spent on water metering as part of infrastructure, as you indicated, the roads, projects, sidewalks, what have you. So, it's an allocation decision, only $25,000 was allocated out of the gas tax money for that. The rest was spent out of water reserve funding that we have. So, that's just a report to you on where that money, how much money is being spent in total on water metering, whether it was for individuals, stratas, or as part of roadworks. So, in terms of what you're asking for, I think what was asked for last week in relation to the downtown Revite, we made a commitment, at least in the budget, draft budget, towards a million-dollar project on the waterfront, which is contingent upon funding from other organizations. And we can't spend any money on any of those projects until such times as we know whether those funding sources are available or not. So, in a long way, somewhat long-winded way, in terms of receiving this report, we're receiving the information that we've been presented. If council wants to further deliberate the budget, there'll be ample opportunity to do that, starting in two weeks' time when we look at operational budgets. And, of course, as we go forward to May 15th, which is the deadline for approval of the budget as a whole. Regardless of what's happened the last two meetings or even what happens today, there'll be that opportunity to go through. I think council's committed to the programs as outlined in the financial statement, in our strategic plan, as well as in whatever's in the next year's budget or this year's budget. It's all part of a larger package, and certainly we have to consider the eligible issues currently for gas tax money. And those aren't going to change for the next two years, although they may change subject.
But it could be allocated towards sidewalk or something else.
Subject to meeting those requirements, yes. But essentially, we've pretty much allocated in the budget, at least on a draft basis, where those meetings are going to go, and whether you're talking downtown Revite or other infrastructure work, it's all part of the overall allocation. Councillor Price?
I just had a question on the Panier Park can, and I see it was an unbudgeted item. Was it the reconstruction, was it vandalized or just...
Sorry, what was that?
Page 18, end of Park and Marina, the Panier Park reconstruction. I just wondered whether it was, because it was unbudgeted, whether it started to fall down or whether it was vandalized.
I'm trying to find where you were.
Page 18, yeah, Panier Park, middle of the page.
So, in the parks and marinas engineering?
Yeah.
Oh, the Karen, sorry.
I think it's like an...
Are you not speaking English there? Or are you weren't speaking English?
So, if you look at the capital budget, what you'll find is Al has an allocation for other projects, and there's several tens of thousands of dollars in there. And what happened in this case was it wasn't a line item in the financial plan, but he had factored that into his budget, and so, all we did was allocate an account number.
Okay, so this program, it was planned to be constructed?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Tom?
I wonder if our CFO would know off the top of his head what our per capita debt is in town of Comox?
Nope.
Boy, you sure had a quick answer.
I only had to look as far as the top of my head.
I wonder if you could...
I can provide that information to you. What you have to be aware of is that a good chunk of our debt is related to specific local service areas, right? We carry some debt for the Kaive Local Service Area, the Point Holmes Local Service Area. So, what I'd like to do is kind of split those area-specific ones out and just look at the debt that's across the whole town.
Yeah, that's what I'd be interested in. Thank you.
And the other thing it wouldn't show necessarily is any debt that's incurred at the Regional Hospital District or sewer or water, so...
No, I'd like that. Specifically what, you know, what the per capita debt is of the town of Comox.
Okay, staff can bring that back. Will that come back in two weeks' time?
I'll include that information with my cover memo on the financial plan.
Good, thank you.
Any further on the financial statement? Seeing none, we'll move on. Correspondents from Karen Kratz, we have a staff report for receipt.
For receipt.
On receipt, all is in favor, motion's carried. So, staff have provided this report in response to the request from Ms. Kratz. And just to point out, fortunately, the yellow highlighting didn't show up here, but talking about four lots, Shelley, would you share the addresses of the city for that?
2276 McKenzie, 227 McKenzie, 2277 Robb, and 2278 Orton Robb.
Okay, the four lots there in the vicinity of Condor and Robb, leading through to McKenzie. So, the report is there, the staff have looked at it, the recommendation is not to acquire those lands for park purposes, and referencing the fact that these would be suitable for residential and footpath development. So, is it any further?
I mean, here's a difficult one. I did go and look at it today, and it is a very nice connection. It's a lot bit of vegetation in that block, and it connects in very nicely to Condor Park with the well-used trails through it and then connecting to a trail in the old park. I'm wondering, and I did spot then that it was four lots, which would bring the purchase price to buy all four up to probably closer to $700,000. And I'm just wondering too that we couldn't use DCC parks money for something that's not in our past plan, is that correct? That we could only use the other plans?
Staff, can you answer that?
From a strictly interpretive point of view, no, we're not supposed to be doing that. The DCC rates are based upon a specific acquisition list. That being said, council can extend those funds as it sees fit and deal with the consequences.
Acting legally and not getting booked.
I'm always loath to just out and out to say, no, council can't do something. I think the real question is, and I encourage council, if you are having a second look at this one, to have a look at what's on the acquisition list and seriously think about what our priorities are and what it might cost us and how much we have in the reserves. And I think there are, that there is at least one other property that's very, very high on our priority list that would essentially require all the funds we have in hand.
And I think that's one of the difficulties is when you do look at it as four lots and the trail goes right down the middle, that's a lot of money. And, you know, I certainly would like to see some community support and community fundraising if it's had the slightest chance of going ahead. And just looking at it too, because we did the great park acquisition down at the Carthew Creek, and I don't know whether there would be any ability within these four lots to actually reconfigure and create that linkage. So, it is a difficult one. I understand where the community's coming from, but I think it would be a hard one to be justifying, you know, close to $700,000 on that.
Well, particularly the Carthew Creek when you referred to was in our acquisition list already, right?
And it would come in at all on no expense at all, so that's the other...
Councillor Tom?
We've run into this several times over the years where you see properties that have been sort of de facto parkland, but in fact, a private property. And, you know, as soon as they come up for development or come up for sale, you know, the neighborhood wants us to buy them and preserve it. And I think it sets a dangerous precedent for us to just buy these on an ad hoc basis. You know, we have a plan, you know, we've set aside DCCs to purchase those properties, and they've been identified for a specific reason, you know, either connectivity or, you know, they're waterfront properties or whatever. And, you know, we've got a significant park in that end of town with Condor Park, and these lots are only four lots away from the corner, so it's not like, you know, it's a huge imposition for anybody to go from Robb to Fakenham back. So, I would not, although, you know, I can appreciate what Karen is getting at here, I would not be in support of spending any money on it.
All right, any further on that? So, at this point, we just received the report, and unless council wishes to make a specific recommendation, that's where it will sit. All right, so we'll move on then to some direction that's been requested by staff regarding some discussions that have ensued regarding the tennis courts, sorry, the possibility of developing an indoor tennis facility on lands located near the Vanney School. And this is going to reach the local governments to be of interest. I do believe that this was dealt with by the council a few weeks ago, and as we've heard, the regional district. Our rec director is here, and I know he's had some background in this issue from the playing field study, so I'll let him provide any further commentary at this time, and we'll see whether there's any unanswered questions.
Yeah, I think there's definitely some interest by a number of parties to improve tennis facilities in the valley. Going back to the playing field study, it was noted at that time that there was a shortage of tennis courts in the valley and looking at how that could be developed. And at the time, it was recommended that they pursue the element of an indoor tennis court in conjunction with Sage Hills. And we all know that Sage Hills isn't happening, and so, further to that recommendation was if that didn't come about within the next three years, a look at pursuing other alternatives, one of those alternatives being the expansion of the courts at Anderson Park. Now, we all know that the expansion there isn't possible, just not enough physical space to go beyond it there, and definitely the improvements that have been there have been significant in quality, quantity, we're still somewhat lacking in the area. Tennis Canada has recognized the North Island as an area where there's huge potential for the development of tennis and tennis facilities. And what they are doing is they're making monies available for feasibility studies for anybody who wants to take a look at developing a court. Now, the school district has shown some interest. We've got a very active Tennis Canada representative in the area who's doing exceptional work in the development of tennis in the area. In fact, when I was leaving the rec center today, she's out there with a bunch of six, seven, eight-year-old kids on the tennis courts with the program going. And this is pretty much a constant in and out of the schools. Over the past year, she's worked with some 3,000 students in the area involved in tennis programs. So, there's a growing interest in providing additional facilities. So, what happened was a meeting was held with a lot of the stakeholders, tennis clubs, school district, all the rec departments, to see if there was any interest in applying to Tennis Canada for funding to do a study to see whether there is any potential for the development of what would be called the North Island Tennis Center. for the development of what would be called the North Island Tennis Center. There's nothing on the North Island at this time. They would like to see something here, Tennis Canada, that is. And so that's what the School District has said. They would provide land and certainly are interested in developing tennis in the school system. They're looking for support from municipal governments to basically make an application to Tennis Canada for money to conduct a study to see if it's possible.
All right, thanks for that. Councilor Kay?
So, yeah, when I read this report, that was the first thing that came to my mind was that this truly does seem like a regional facility to me if it were ever to come to fruition. So, you know, when Courtney... And then you said Courtney had referred it to the Regional District. And to me, that's probably where the discussion should be had.
Well, and certainly that could be had. But of course, we're all participants in that. So whether there's anything in terms of support you want to provide to at this point, rather than just referring now, I guess is one question. Anyway, Tom, go ahead.
Well, you know, before we get involved in building a brand-new facility, you know, I'd just like to point out that we have got major capital, major capital expenditures that are going to be required by the curling club. We've got an ice rink... We've got two ice rinks out there that are, well, I mean, the one... How old is that sheet of ice? 30 years old? You know, and they need, you know, they need...
Just working.
Yeah, you know, they have to be torn out and redone. So there's more capital expenditures coming there, you know. Building, you know, a tennis center, I don't know. I just... I just wonder where it all ends. Because, you know, you build that, now you have to maintain it. And, you know, so there's just more money that's going to be required. And I just worry with all the capital we've got with solid waste and water and sewer and curling clubs and hockey rinks and swimming pools. And I just caution before we get involved in more large capital expenditures unless somebody's coming to the party with a whole bunch of money. But then we still own it.
Right, I guess what possibly there could be a commitment subject to the CVRD and the Sports Commission there to doing at least a feasibility study of perhaps the Tennis Canada, hopefully, or a whole one apart. This sort of came out of the Playing Fields Committee discussion. Tennis was involved in that. It is their own support. So that's where it sort of comes from. Nothing that we decided tonight would have any negative or positive effect on any of that. But I guess whether or not there's a willingness to at least look at it as part of all these requests that are coming forward. Yep, Ben?
Yeah, I have to agree that we've got the curling rink. It's already in line. We have no idea what that's... How that might unfold. We've just got the artificial turf field that's just begun. And that's on the radar as well. But I'm just wondering, if it were to come to the Regional District, just simply asking an application to Tennis Canada for a feasibility study, would members of council be comfortable with that? I don't see too much harm in that going that far down the road. That's where it starts. You're correct.
Councilor Kay?
So my understanding is if there was a feasibility done by Tennis Canada, that wouldn't cause dissent to any jurisdiction here. I don't see the harm in that. As far as the town, we did spend some significant funds upgrading our outdoor tennis courts. And that was needed, and I supported that, and I'm glad we did it. But I have reservations right now about committing anything. And I would not object to a feasibility study if it didn't cost us anything. And maybe there's a private party that could come forward after that feasibility study that might consider operating the tennis center. I think there's some smaller communities our size that have private operators that do operate indoor tennis facilities.
All right. So if I heard you correctly, I don't get the point of doing a feasibility study if you're not going to then put any money into it. So I'm wondering, from my own point of view, what's the point? But I mean, I think if you look at what the information we've got here, it's pretty clear that a feasibility study is going to tell you that we could... That it would work. But then you're not going to fund it when you get there. So I'm not really sure why we would do that if that's the case.
It would give us more details across the board.
Yeah, I mean typically feasibility studies are done for that very reason, to see if it's feasible. So you look at all the issues, the land, whatever. It was done overall for the playing fields over the many years. And certainly not all the projects were pursued and completed in that regard, but quite a few of them were. Most recently, the all-weather field. So those are ones that started with a feasibility study. And yes, subsequent commitments were made based on that feasibility study. So it may be that, and if Tennis Canada comes forward and says, we'll do the feasibility study, you can still receive that and decide whether you want to proceed on it. And nobody's saying that it has to be done. I agree, there is a role for the private sector, certainly the communities with indoor tennis facilities. That's usually what happens. And yes, we have a lot of... We have a huge, long wish list of things, not just wishes but needs, that have to be dealt with. $100 million for wires and sewer over the next 10, 15 years. Curling club, whatever that's going to entail. There might be some out there who would argue that there's more tennis players and curlers and all those kinds of issues come forward. Anyway, that's... Those are my comments on it. And I understand the concerns expressed around this table on it. But whether or not council wishes simply to receive it, refer it, and make any comment on it, I guess is really what we're being asked to be here.
So what would our... If we were to refer this, then we would say we're referring it, but we're not putting any money into it? Is that...
Well, I think we could refer it to the Regional District with some indication of support for a feasibility study that was funded by other perks, such as Tennis Canada or private or whoever. With no financial commitment, I guess is what.
I guess I have an issue. A feasibility study is going to determine if it's feasible. It's just going to be a matter of how much money we're willing to devote to it. So as I say, I don't know if there's any harm in having it done. But I think we've supported Tennis pretty well in our own community. And I'm concerned about these other projects that we already have that have been to repair maintenance and ongoing monies.
Yeah, I don't... I can't expect the lay-in on a feasibility study that show you would determine the parameters around which it could be done or not. I mean, they're going to have to look at the market being served. They're going to have to look at the costs, operational, capital, how it could be funded, et cetera. All those things would be then presented and then decided upon. Again, very much similar to what the playing field strategy did starting back in 99 and resulted in some improvements. Hockey rinks were built over the years. Most recently, I think in 96, there was a referendum on arenas and pools. I mean, it starts somewhere and ends somewhere. At this point, it's being brought forward to us for at least some indication of support or not. How do you wish to proceed, council? Trevor?
Well, I could see, you know, referring it to the Regional District. And, you know, looking at the feasibility study, I think there should be some indication that funding is... There's little likelihood of funding from us because we've already invested significantly in tennis, outdoor tennis in our own community. If it opens the door to a private development or to a nonprofit, then, you know, obviously, the more facilities that people can get healthy in, you know, the better the community. But I certainly share the concerns that there's a lot of money out there that needs to be spent. So I wouldn't like to give any false hope that there would be anything of any significance coming from tax dollars.
So a motion to refer to the CVRD with support for a feasibility study but no financial commitment from the Towne Coles?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a seconder for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All is in favor? opposed, motion's carried. Thank you for that discussion. No further answers for business this evening. So a motion to adjourn would be in order. In favor, motion's carried.